Can you hear me? Good afternoon, everyone. I call this May 14th zoning meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commission to Order. We will have a moment of silence and then a pledge allegiance, which I shall lead, so please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand. Thank you. Item three, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Director Ham.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Nicholas Ham, Director for Planning and Development Services, there are no changes or additions to our agenda today. We plan to proceed as scheduled.
Great, thank you. Item four, approval of minutes. I move approval of the March 19th special zoning meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that crosses. Second, I move approval of the April 9th 2024 zoning meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And now we move into a public hearing, and I will turn it over to Nicholas Ham, Director, to lead us through that.
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioners, good afternoon. We're here for our third meeting convened to discuss the City of Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan. Today, we should, I think we'll proceed rather swiftly, but I have a sort of a suggested outline for how things are going to progress today. So we'll start with my opening remarks. I'll then turn it over to Ms. Lopez for her presentation. We'd like then to create some space for agency or staff comments, and then moving on to public comment, and then allow for discussion for the board. And if there needs to be rebuttal or a question and answer session for staff after public comment or during your discussion, we're happy to accommodate that as well. So if it's all right with you, Madam Chair, I'll sort of just get going here.
Yes.
Very good, okay. We are happy to report that since our last meeting, we've made additional progress to help answer some of the questions that the board brought up and some of the comments that the public has provided for us. I think sort of the thing that is maybe the highlight for today is that we have worked with the City of Albuquerque's planning staff, both the department representatives from the council planning office and the mayor's planning representative, to push forward this concept of the shared vision chapter and to sort of reintegrate the city and the county's planning documents as much as we can while still allowing for each of us to retain our autonomous jurisdiction for land use and to administer our own processes as we would need to through our adopted ordinances. One of the things that came out of that is we now have a letter of support from Ms. Rens Whitmore from the city's planning department. We were very happy to work with her and her colleagues, and we do really believe in the product that bridges sort of the gap, I guess, for lack of a better word, between the city and the county's planning processes. So now we really do have sort of a shared concept. We've centralized the shared policies around centers and corridors, and I think that this makes for the best of both worlds, where we can now have a cooperative and recognized and formalized system where we do things together, and then where we also have our own autonomous processes where we can do things as each municipality needs to, to address community needs and concerns. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we've still worked on addressing public comments as they've came in. Most recently, we've met with folks around additional language in the water chapter. So what we've worked on over the last 24 hours really is additions to the water management and the water quality chapters, just to sort of improve the policy language that we have there, and to start to identify some additional techniques by which we could implement that. So those are hot off the press, so to speak, so we'll read those into the record. Ms. Lopez will do that during her presentation. And just to say broadly, we've now got sort of a more user-friendly way for the commission and the public to track the way that we've taken in and addressed community input. So there's now a 50-page staff report that's sort of a more digestible and easy-to-access document without having to sort of dig into the whole plan and go through the red lines, and then a corresponding table to sort of summarize those for everyone. So our aim there was to make this a user-friendly and accessible process so that people could sort of follow along at home and in here as well. With that, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Lopez, our project manager and sort of the person that shepherded us all the way here.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Elvira Lopez, Planning Manager for Burnley County Planning and Development Services. I'm very honored to be here at this stage. This is the third BCC meeting to discuss the Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan. And if we can share my screen, I'll be kind of presenting as I, slides as I speak. And so the first thing I wanted to talk about, we've had two previous meetings. The first one on March 19th, where we first presented the plan to the Board of County Commissioners, and where we continue to have public input. That meeting, we heard from the community who had been, some of who had been following the project through the CPC hearings and even before we submitted formally through our processes. That meeting was followed by a meeting on April 9th, and in that meeting, we had the opportunity to have our directors and managers from county departments present on the plan. And you also continue to hear from the public. That includes the residents, businesses, the business community, and even agencies that had participated in this process. After that meeting, as a result of that, we did hear clearly that we needed to provide a staff report that could more clearly track all of the sequence of events, and particularly how we are tracking that public input that is so important to this process, not only from our departments and the agencies, but also from the general public, and as I said, the resident communities, the business communities, and other stakeholders like the tribes. And so we did submit this staff report. I will not go through it. It's a 50-page document, but even in the table of contents, you can follow the sequence of meetings a little bit more clearly, beginning with the November 1st CPC hearing, followed by a January 1st CPC hearing, where the County Planning Commission recommended unanimously to recommend approval of the plan. March 19th, as I said, we had our first meeting at the BCC, followed by April 9th, and then leading us here to May 14th. What's been interesting, challenging, and also exciting because of the quantity of input and interest from the community is that at each of these stages, we have gotten very meaningful input to the content of the plan, which in and of itself is an accomplishment because a comprehensive plan is so broad and can be really abstract. And what I mean is hard to understand how such a large plan with the policies, the general policies, how does it affect my life, you know, as an individual member, resident in the community? So being able to kind of get through all those layers and have folks that show up and understand how these plans do end up affecting their quality of life, how their environment is developed, how their natural resources are preserved and conserved, how their histories and identities can be supported and protected and even enhanced and moving into the future. So that's been a really exciting and challenging, I will say, aspect of all of this. And with this staff report, our intention was to really provide everything. If anyone wanted to look at any of the input, that's embedded in the attachments. And leading up to every hearing, there continues to be input. So the challenge there is to continue to document and then bring that input that's within the scope of the plan into the revisions that have been posted over time. And I've shown you colorful images of these additions. That's been a way that we can track the plan updates. And if I could, you know, toggle between these two, just because there's so much to show. And then when I toggle back, it's number one, right? Okay. And for those who are following virtually, we just want to make sure that our images are conveying. That's it. The result was on the right. Okay, perfect. And so many of you have been following. This is something I like to show. It's just a very simple way to show the amount of effort from our staff, but I also say from the public and the general public, the agencies who've participated. This has been a massive effort, beginning with our 2013 plan. That is the basis of this update. It is the plan that we still follow because as we've been working on this project, we have continued to receive land use requests. And so currently, we're referring to the policies in the 2013 plan. And I will also, this is a good opportunity to emphasize that in the city's plan, their 2017 plan is also based on this plan. So inherently, we have shared goals and policies. And so this effort to better align our policies through our name and through its shared chapters is meaningful and important, and it also reflects the fact that we do come from the same original 2013 plan. But since then, we've gone through many iterations, and where we now are in the lavender edition. So this constitutes six publications. At each stage, we have been rolling in the input that has come in from all of the folks that I've mentioned. So today, we are here to discuss the lavender edition that was last published on April 30th, so giving folks a couple of weeks to take a look at the plan leading into this hearing. And so what I would like to just give an overview about is what were those, what was that input that has been brought into the lavender edition? And so in your staff report, there were 50 pages, and I apologize, but I did provide a table of contents. I'm going to kind of the section on May 14th, because I have already presented on how we've incorporated input into the previous editions, the last one being the March 8th Blue Sky Edition. So what has happened since then? And this would really reflect all of the comments that we've received at the BCC meeting, starting March 19th, followed by April 9th, all of that comment that could not be incorporated into the March 8th Blue Sky. And so what we have here is a table of the comments. In the first column, we have what kind of comment did we get, who was it from, and keeping things general, and what chapter did it impact, and how was the comment addressed in the lavender edition? And so we did want to start with the City of Albuquerque. That was a very significant input that we got from the planning department, from the mayor, from the city council, where they wanted to see that we had a strong relationship with them, even though we had a plan that was more focused on the county. They still wanted us to articulate how we continue to collaborate, how we continue to have a common vision and common goals and policies for regional growth. And we agreed. We thought that was very important. I think we were hearing from our community and our leaders that that was important, so we continued to work with them. And as Mr. Ham, Director Ham, has reported to you, we're happy to say that we do have now a shared name, Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan. That's how the lavender edition was published, and we have a new shared vision chapter. I'm going to do a general overview of all the comments, and then we can go into that shared vision chapter in some more details. Other comments from the public had to do with water, the water chapter. So when you open up the lavender edition, we published both a clean copy and a redline copy, because one of our goals is to, you know, as Director Ham said, having, allowing the public to follow what the changes are as we've moved through each of the additions. And in that redline, you'll see that the water management chapter is one of the most changed chapters, because there has been so much interest. And it's interesting to see that that has risen almost to the top as one of the most important areas of concern from the public, what's happening with water as it relates to land development. So we did, and that is, you know, you can follow the table here on page 261. We had other comments through this process that were reflected in the update. I'd like to make note that the Pueblo Visleta has been involved from, throughout this process and was able to send us a letter of support and additional edits, and we have been able to incorporate those as well. We heard from Paradise Hills Zoning District. We incorporated their comments. We had comments from, one person sent a very eloquent letter about wanting to affirm regional planning, and I think that speaks to the importance of having a shared vision with the city. Our commissioner asked us to look into transit planning in rural communities and how we were going to address transit planning in the future for the unincorporated areas. So we followed up with the appropriate agencies, the city, and our own staff to coordinate additional language to ensure that that was clear in our policies. And I'd like to say that since then even, we have heard additional concerns from folks concerned about projects like Santalina and where's the water planning happening. And so as Director Ham mentioned, we have further worked on that work, and that's some of the details I want to get into during this presentation. But before I pivot to the water, I'm going to go back to this shared vision, if I would like to share that chapter. I'm going to open that virtually. So I'm sorry, I'm going to toggle back. Ah, perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay. So here is the shared vision chapter, and I'd just like to say that we've been working with a short timeframe. The last meeting was April 9th, and so doing, immediately contacting the city to get to work, roll up our sleeves. Originally, as we entered this BCC level hearings, our strategy was to work on a shared document, you might recall from previous hearing discussions. What resulted was an interest to prepare this shared vision at this stage rather than postpone it for, you know, an after-approval. And so just putting that into context, because you will see that we still have some recommended edits. This chapter that I'm sharing has, is reflective of what has been published in the lavender edition plus additional comments from the city. So in creating the shared vision document that has been published in lavender edition, we did coordinate with the city. We incorporated their initial comments. But given the short timeframe, after we published, we still reached out to the city, and they still had some, what I would describe as minor edits. And I'm sharing those with you for the first time. Those have not been included in the staff report or published yet, but that is something that was really important to make sure we solidify this, particularly with the understanding that this is something that's going to go and proposed to be adopted both by the city and the county. So as a shared vision document, we are committing ourselves to having a document that has goals and policies, and when we update those goals and policies, we are committing to coordinating with the city to have those common goals and policies or goals and policies that are aligned. And the areas that the shared vision chapter covers include the Centers and Corridors framework, which we've discussed already here in the meetings, which is a very important part of both of our visions. It is how we organize land use and transportation corridors in Burnley County and the city of Albuquerque. And it also covers concepts of open space planning and green spaces. It covers concepts of our, excuse me, so the open space planning, and I'm just kind of working my way through it. And again, this has been published on our website in the lavender edition, complete communities, jobs-to-housing balances, as well as efficient development patterns. And then we go into some of the other service areas, like economic development, as well as behavioral health. There's the jobs-to-housing, and all of our aligned goals and policies. Multicultural heritage, how do we have common goals and policies for those areas? Human services and community health, that is what would relate to the behavioral health for the region, housing and economic development. So I would like to say that, and report to you, that we have coordinated and had success with developing a shared vision, and since then, we do have an updated chapter to share with you. We can, again, we can go into the details, but it's something we would like to let you know and report to you about. And as Director Ham has stated, because of this good work and this success, we have received a very positive letter from the City of Albuquerque Planning that they find this to be an elegant solution, and I'm not sure if you've And I'm not sure if you've received the letter. We did forward it, but I have it with me if you would like to look at it. And we were, we do have folks from the city here, and I would like them to speak after our presentation with regards to this shared vision chapter that we're very proud of. Moving on, as Director Ham has reported, even working down to the last 24 hours, we heard from residents who are concerned with planned communities. And how do we do planned communities and make sure that we're planning efficiently and that we are considering the most important resources of the community? And as I said, water is of great concern to many residents. We have worked diligently from the very beginning, working and coordinating with the Water Authority, AMAFCA, MRGCD. The tribes have commented on the water chapters. But I think we still, we pushed ourselves, we heard, and we looked for an opportunity to clarify because I think the idea was to make a stronger link between land use planning and recognizing the existing conditions of water and water planning. And so we do have some language around that that I would like to share with you. I apologize, that one I have printed, so I am going to toggle again. But I think I've figured this one out. Okay, here we go. Oh, we got it. Okay, thank you. All right, so this is it. These modifications relate to two chapters. We have two chapters in the plan. And again, this plan is based on the 2013 comprehensive plan that we currently follow. We have a water management and a water quality chapter. So the first modifications that we would propose are shown here, and they relate to Policy C. But first, I would like to report to you that we, we planning staff in coordination with our natural resources, technical staff manager, Mr. Dan McGregor, whom we've been working and collaborating with from the very beginning, we got to work since yesterday to try to address those last comments. And we also were fortunate to be able to coordinate with the Water Authority as recently as today. So these have been reviewed by the Water Authority as well as our own legal staff and again, our natural resources staff. So these are pretty well-vetted at this point. And what we're proposing is the language in red. So the language in black refers to that language that has already been posted. And I keep referring to that because I want the public to follow along, what they have seen and what's new. So this is the first time folks are seeing this. We just edited this language. And so this is from page 277 in the water management chapter. And we have a Policy C. We are proposing to add the additional red text, and it says, "Coordination with local, state, and other agencies to plan and maintain an adequate water supply to meet municipal agricultural and ecosystem needs." And to add the language that says, "That ensures the overall resilience and sustainability of our community." And then we are proposing to add an additional possible technique six. That reads, "Ensure consistency between the comp plan and ABCWUA and other water agencies policies by coordinating availability, infrastructure, planning, and programming." And so the idea here is to make sure that we have coordination between this comprehensive plan and the water agencies that we need to coordinate with. The other area that I would like to point to is Water Quality Chapter Policy D. And that's on page 286. We also want to add additional language where now this policy would read, "Water quality management planning shall be coordinated to ensure that Bernaleo County citizens receive adequate water quantity and quality that meets essential needs." So we would be adding, "And that will keep our community and ecosystem healthy." We are also wanting to add the red text to possible technique two.
Ms. Lopez, just a moment.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson has a question.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Lopez? The, what does that language add? And the same with the last page. Can you explain that to me?
Yes.
Like that ensure the overall resilience and sustainability of our community, determined by who? And the same with the second page? Just curious why that was added? I don't know that it adds any function to what was already written.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think that's a great, excellent question. What we did when we were asked and tasked with this opportunity and challenge, what we, the first thing we did is look to our colleagues at the city's plan, which is something we've done from the very beginning. When we were updating the chapters, we were always looking at the city's 2017 plan side by side to make sure that we were also working to incorporate the latest policies and goals that were applicable to the county. And so what we did is we looked at their corresponding policy relating to this particular topic. And we have the same, what we're proposing is language that would be exactly the same as the city's policy when it comes to this topic of coordinating with other entities at the local, state, and all the levels that we need to consider when we're doing water planning. And so what this adds is that additional language, for example, that ensure the overall resilience and sustainability of our community acknowledges that we do face challenges such as climate change. We've discussed that in our chapters. And that being resilient and thinking about sustainability in our community is important. But I will defer, it looks like our director would like to add some additional language.
Thanks, Ms. Lopez. Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, and the way that these will be utilized and who makes that determination is our department would use that as the prism with which we look through to make recommendations about applications that will be considered by the planning commission and the board of county commissioners. And then that ultimate authority would be with you all as the final decision-making body for land use questions in the county. So our aim here is to provide the board and the planning commission also in the recommendation procedures to have more clear direction about how they can consider some of the challenges, I think is the right word, that the county might face in the future with regard to water resources and water availability in the context of making a land use or entitlement decision. So we're hoping that this addresses some of the concerns we've heard from the community and some of the folks in the water resources section. Mr. McGregor was instrumental in helping us sort of get here where we were. I've had the pleasure of working him for a long time, and I trust very much his expertise in that realm. And also just to make sure that the board had adequate tools to make wise land use decisions as we look through the future, you know, as we try to navigate water in the West, which is something that, you know, is, requires deliberation and requires careful consideration.
So can I clarify that the language was, this is the same language in the city's comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Okay, so a lot of it is just for the consistency between Bernaleo County and the city of Albuquerque?
Madam Chair, Baca, Commissioner Benson, that would be an important part of this objective and this, our purpose here.
Ms. Lopez, Mr. Ham, and Commissioner Benson, I also wanted to add that I think that what we're trying to do, there's a lot of good language in philosophy and visioning in this comprehensive plan. What we also want to do with these policies and techniques is truly give tools to our county planning commission when they are evaluating whether a proposed development is going to be a sustainable development, given the water availability, given climate change, given the fact that we are having to deal with a whole new hydrologic reality. And so it allows us at this level to provide opportunities for those tools, for us to make decisions or our successors in the future to make those decisions, particularly at the county planning commission. So I think that's, these additions to the policy component of the plan and the techniques by which we're asking you to, you know, look for these tools is extremely important. Thank you.
Madam Chair, shall I proceed?
Please.
Policy D was to add additional language, again, to be consistent with city's policies around these topics of water quality management planning. And I've read that one into the record. And then secondly, as shown in the red text, a change to Policy E, Technique Two, to add water availability as part of the consideration. I will read it. "Integrate drainage, stormwater protection, water availability, and water conservation in the land use decision and planning process, including master planning and planned communities criteria." And of course, Policy E, it is important to see the Policy E that it relates to, "Provide greater emphasis on a total systems approach to water as a valuable resource and the role of water management in mitigating impacts of climate change." I want to remind you that the black text has already been published, it's been vetted, and it's been as part of this proposal at these hearings. So what we're, the red text is, "Any changes since the March 8th publication of the Blue Sky Edition." Okay. Let me proceed. If there are no additional questions about these proposed amendments or modifications to the water policies to respond to more recent public input?
I do have one question, Ms. Lopez. So you said that these have been vetted, yet they're new to us today. So they have sort of been vetted. And I guess we have provided this information to the Water Authority, to our legal department. So I just want to make sure that we are able to know, and even the public, our water advocates, if you will, that have been talking to us are satisfied that this is good policy. We don't want to adopt policy that we just saw today for the first time. So I just want to, when you say they've been vetted, what do you mean?
Madam Chair, Ms. Lopez, I think she's getting at the text in black is what's familiar to both you and the public.
But the new text.
And what's new, the red, you are absolutely correct. That's brand new today, the first time that the public has seen it broadly is with the contemporary, is reading of that into the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Ham. Madam Chair, any other questions about the water chapter modifications?
See none.
Okay. I can go back to the shared vision chapter. As I said, the shared vision chapter has been reviewed by, first by our city colleagues. But since the publication, they had additional edits, and we have incorporated those. And those are similar to what you've seen being presented here for the first time. So you could see this as an evolving process, particularly if we have short time windows to publish and where we are taking on very important tasks. So I would agree, there is probably a need for additional review. This is the first time that you are seeing this, some of the additional edits. I would describe the additional edits as minor. They're mostly to wordsmithing and word choice. But at this point, we have agreed on the aligned goals and policies that we share in common.
In the shared vision?
In the shared vision chapter that you, that has been provided to you in the staff reports as Attachment 23 and 22. Okay. And with that, I think that concludes my presentation with the most significant modifications and changes and the public input, the nature of the public input that has been reflected. We are prepared with findings and conditions, but unless we're going to move to approve those, I'll hold off on presenting on those. I am aware here that we have the city of Albuquerque colleagues that I have invited to present and to speak about their position about this plan as it stands now.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Michaela Renz Whitmore. I'm a planning manager for the city of Albuquerque. I'd like to thank you and the county planning staff for working with us to come up with a way to honor the excellent planning work that you all have done while maintaining a commitment to a jointly adopted comprehensive plan. I believe the two-volume comprehensive plan is an elegant approach that allows each jurisdiction to speak with its own voice, focus on its own priorities, and implement the plan in its own way while keeping a shared regional vision as our joint destination for the future. If the county adopts the proposed approach, the city will reconcile our plan, our volume, according to the revised vision chapter with the shared regional vision you all adopt, add the shared appendix, and remove narrative policies and actions that are related exclusively to the unincorporated county from the city's volume, leaving the county's volume to speak for county communities. Once vetted with our communities in the city, we will submit our revised city volume and the county's volume to our planning commission for recommendation and to city council for adoption. If adopted, we will send the city's volume back to you all for joint adoption. We appreciate your recognition of our shared future, the wisdom of efficient provision of services and joint planning, the importance of our ongoing relationship, and this institutional fortification of our solidarity. I stand for questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Barboia.
I mostly just wanted to thank you for coming. Thank you for engaging with our team and just really for making this happen so that we have a shared vision and our boats are rowing in the same direction.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thanks to county staff.
Thank you. I also, Michaela, I would really like to thank you, the planning department at the city. I know that our folks have worked with you through the years, but this is a really great expression of solidarity. And in something that I, I know you know, that I feel that the comprehensive plan is a regional plan. It has to include city and county cooperation, and this is a good day. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Or we'll, and then we need to go to public comment. I think we have three folks signed up, so.
I just want to make a quick, also thank you to our staff for working hard. I feel so thankful, everything I've questioned and brought up in this process, you have come back, followed up with me constituents of mine that had concerns. You met with them one-on-one. They told me how professional, how thorough you were in working with them multiple times. So I know just the time that it's taken, but that's like our job. And I just thank you for doing it so, like excelling at it and doing so well. I feel really proud as an elected person to work in the way that I can, that my community sees exactly how strong and hard and important this is to you all, and they feel seen and heard. So I just want to thank you for that so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? So let's hear from our public. Angela?
Madam Chair, we have three signed up for public comment or public hearing. The first would be David Vogel. He is remote, David Vogel. And he does not appear to be online, so we'll move on to in-person. And we have Elizabeth Haley. And if you would please make your way down to the podium when you hear your name, Elizabeth Haley, followed by Renee Horvath.
And while she's making her way down, we did not announce, but this is a two, yes, please, Ms. Haley. There's, we'll have a two-minute time on there, and you'll be notified with a little yellow light, so please.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Haley, and I'm a commissioner with the Paradise Hills Special Zoning District and also an officer in the West Side Coalition of Neighborhoods, which includes both Bernaleo County and Albuquerque residents. I wanted to thank you so much for including the information. I wanted to thank you so much for including the information from Paradise Hills. It was, it, 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 it meant a lot to us, just, just a lot, and we felt that we were being heard. The other, the other thing that I wanted to note is that although it is very important to have cooperation, I mean, I sit on a group that's called the Inter Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. It's all the Coalition of Neighborhood Associations representing both Albuquerque and Burnleyo County, and we talk about these joint issues all the time. And that kind of joint cooperation and vision and understanding from someone else's point of view is absolutely critical. But I did, I did want to say that there, I was very pleased with the combined section, but the comp plan from the City of Albuquerque, and, and because of the date of it, was before the adoption of the IDO. In the IDO, the sector plans were taken away and brought down to the level of ordinance. As you move forward, some of that applicable state and federal requirements you don't often find in the ordinance for the City of Albuquerque. The other, the other note, and this is the first time I saw it, I didn't plan to say this, but I was a little concerned in the water policy, and perhaps it's there, but I noticed that the County Planning Commission had been zeroed out as one of the reviewing agencies, and I think that any water policy needs to have a quasi-judicial forum. That's the only comment that I wish to make there. But I guess what I'm also trying to say, as you move together, please don't forget the very important things that we have retained within the planning philosophy within the county. And sometimes, what I see in the work with the West Side Coalition is that county areas that are essentially rural are being impacted by the additional density and intensity with these corridor plans. So, all of a sudden, you have someone who is, has a house on a one-acre lot that has twenty-six town homes and a mixed-use development just coming up right beside them. So, although these things sound great in principle, when you look at them just in the hard reality, sometimes that kind of cooperation and shared vision isn't quite as positive as one would think. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for your cooperation.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Ms. Haley, actually, I would like to ask Mr. Hamm to address that comment. I did notice that. And by the way, thank you for incorporating Paradise Hills' concerns after the last meeting. I forgot to thank you for that. But, yeah, can you explain the rationale for eliminating the Burnleyo County aspect of that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so, I think what's being referenced is in the draft of the techniques that were shown today, there was a, that was a rough version of, of language that we were sort of tinkering with between county planning staff, Natural Resource Services staff, county legal staff, and, and something that we were hoping to send to the Water Utility Authority. In discussions with our legal department, the seventh item that was presented there was a little too rough and probably went above and beyond what we, what the county could feel comfortable with through the perspective of what's legally defensible and what's legally accurate. And Mr. Martinez, if I'm butchering this, please step in. So, the recommendation was that we, we bolster Number Six to include the intent that we were going for with Number Seven. So, that language that you saw is a strike-through. We, we are attempting to not put that forth for consideration because we didn't get consensus from our legal department, but we did incorporate the things that, the spirit, if you will, of that seventh item into Number Six as the possible technique. And, and again, the goal with all of those in the Water Management Chapter is to create a stronger link between land use planning and the reality about water availability and water resources. And that's, that, in our opinion, Number Six gets to that. It is approved by our colleagues at the Water Authority. Our legal department, in their preliminary analysis of it, was comfortable with that as well. And if provided the opportunity, I think we want to take the next two weeks to really hone that in and make sure that we get not only our internal legal professionals to be able to review that, but perhaps even maybe some outside counsel that has expertise in this, just to make sure that we are crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, if you will.
So, Number Six had referenced Water Authority, but it also referenced other utilities. I assume that's like Sandia Heights Water Utility. Okay.
Precisely.
Good, good. Well, I wonder if you could incorporate our own, our own internal department as part of Number Six as well, if you're getting input from all the organizations, just to kind of make that Number Six stronger, possibly addressing, I think, I think one of the concerns is just making sure that Burnleyo County is, has, has autonomy in our own governance. I, and I don't want to speak for you, Ms. Haley, but that's what I see in Number Seven being struck out. So, just an observation.
The concern was, is that I think that there needs to be a quasi-judicial hearing about water issues. In other words, there needs to be a format.
Ms. Haley, would you mind going to the microphone? Just so this is on the record.
I think that my concern is that in these areas of water, you need to also be able to have someplace where the public can have their feelings and ideas and experience on the record. And one of the things about, about taking the, the quasi-judicial format that you have with the County Planning Commission out of that is that when there are issues that come up, I didn't see in any of that list a place where the public had a format to bring their concerns. I'm not, I'm not demanding that I, as a person, think of that, you know, think of the, the proper solution, but I think that has to be part of the formula. Very often, you do have a technical review committee that comes together, but you also have a venue where the public can talk about their, their, their process and their, the impacts to their property, and get their due process to be able to wade in on the impacts that they would experience personally and as communities. That's the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, just, just to clarify, the additional technique that we're proposing, it doesn't change anything about the process. So, the Planning Commission, still, through the county's adopted planning ordinance, has the authority to consider and study things that are put forth as far as land use questions go. And water is inherently one of those things that becomes part of the dialogue. And so, what we're looking to do in those techniques is, is like I said earlier, to, to sort of bridge that or make a stronger relationship between a land use question and a water question. And I, and our, our position, and it's shared with our Natural Resource Services staff and the Water Authority, and almost our legal department, I think that they want the benefit of time just to make sure that, and I completely agree with that, is that we're, we have gotten there in a way that balances the forces that we have to here, meaning that the county has a role in this, but we recognize that we operate in an area where there is an autonomous water utility authority that has their own authority in operations, but that we also have other entities, Sandia Heights, Intronosa, Public Water Systems, that also have a role in this, that we want to be able to invite into the fold and make sure that they're part of the process as we're, as we're deliberating these future land use questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamm.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Renee Horvath.
Hello, my name is Renee Horvath, and I live in Taylor Ranch, and I'm with the Taylor Ranch Neighborhood Association and the West Side Coalition as their land use director, so I deal with a lot of land use cases. So, we have been paying attention to this comp plan, and we do pay attention to a lot what's going on with the city. So, I, I do appreciate that Ms. Lopez went over the shared vision with me last week, and there are some good concepts in there, and, and so, we agree with those, but we do urge caution about doing any sort of major changes with zoning or sector plans because we did some, the, the city changed their zone code in 2017. It's much more intense and dense, and it's really out of scale with a lot of our areas, especially along our open space areas that were, we worked hard to try to preserve for the whole community. And there's a lot of viewscape, even in Albuquerque, which I, I think we take for granted how unique we are with our views. So, as you're planning things out, you know, with transit-oriented development, that's pretty intense, you know? You're going to get a lot of density, that encourages that. But you want to maintain the character of your areas, and I think that's where a lot of conflicts come in. If we change too drastically out of scale and character and change the character of our areas, it creates a lot of conflicts. And so, I hope that this county will maintain their sector plans. We have a beautiful sector plan, the Court's Quarter Plan, to, has new regulations. It's always a challenge to get the development projects to follow along with it. Sometimes they focus, well, we're encouraged to do more density, but sometimes just, you know, tone it down a little bit and address some of the community issues can solve some issues and not be so conflicting. And, and just let you know, you know, we do support the water issues, we understand that, so you, you may want to have some density, but please try to remember to maintain scale and character with the area. And, and also, we understand transit, we support transit, but we lost four of our bus routes in the last year. They've been eliminated, and we really use them, especially the U N M kids, and going down to U N M Hospital, people use that. So, I, I did want you just to maintain community character and think about our petroglyphs and our views. And I'm Al Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Horvath.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we had a late, a late sign-up, if you would like to allow, Mr. Ronald Bohannon.
And David Vogel is, is not on the?
He did, he is on now.
Oh, okay, so we have two more. Mr. Bohannon, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Ron Bohannon. I'm a lifelong resident of Albuquerque, actually, second generation. My family's only been influencing this community for sixty-five years, me personally for thirty-eight, going on forty quickly. And I'm raising two more engineers in my family, so we plan to be around for a long, long time. I'm here in support of the water issues. At policy is always a delicate balance to, to do, and the proof is in the pudding. And so, you, we've got to move forward, we've got to have balanced water use and land use. It goes hand-in-hand. It has in New Mexico for generations, for hundreds of years. I think, again, the policy is good to balance a lot of those individual little users that have water rights in the valleys, that want to do their own things with the Water Authority and the bigger communities, but there is a balance. And I think the community, the staff here does a very good job of balancing those, those uses. We have a employment center in the county. It's five hundred acres that we're hoping to get off the ground with our own utility system, so we're watching this very closely, we're in support of this, and we, we hope to grow about fifteen thousand jobs in the South Valley area between Mesa del Sol and the university. And so, we're in support. We're in support of this, and we look forward to working with the county staff. Be happy to answer any questions, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon.
Okay. We'll move on to our virtual, David Vogel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is David Vogel. I've lived in.
Mr. Vogel, we can't hear you. Maybe we can get the volume up a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little weak.
Let's see if I can fix that.
Maybe you're just, you need to get closer to your mic. You're, you're very weak coming through.
Is that any better now?
No, you might just have to speak loudly.
Okay, I'll.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, there we go. The tech demons are having at me, I apologize. So, my name is David Vogel. I have lived in Burnleyo County for about fifty years. I appreciate this opportunity. This is a very exciting time for Burnleyo County and what I'm seeing happening with this comprehensive plan. The work that Ms. Lopez, Ms. Lopez and Planner Hamm have done in this effort is quite remarkable. The shared vision between the city and the county is something that's been on the agenda for, I think, a couple of decades, and we're finally actually seeing something happen that is very exciting in terms of joint planning. The coordination with the water and land use functions is very important in this plan, and I'm delighted to see and hear the movement in that direction and coordinating with the Water Authority in a more deliberate fashion, in addition to what's already being done. I think there's, it's important to recognize, the beginning of this planning process started with a friend of all of ours, his name was Paul Lusk, who wrote the first city plan in the nineteen seventies, I believe, and we are now seeing the, he would be very happy to hear and know what's happening in this current comprehensive plan. So, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that's, that's already being done and to cheer you on in the direction you're going. It can't be any better. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
That concludes public comment. Mr. Hamm.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, just a few brief closing remarks, if I might. I wanted to address Ms. Horvath's comments about the importance of sector plans and to just say with unequivocal certainty that the county's version of planning intends to keep the plan ranking system, which would, which would include keeping and even developing our sector plans further, and that would, not only our sector plans, but our area plans as well. So, I just wanted to make the public assured that that's something that, with the support of the board, we intend to continue to do.
And I, I do want to tell you that I think that there, you have great support for that.
Appreciate that very much. Mr. Lusk was mentioned. The department would very much support dedicating the county's volume to Mr. Lusk, or even the document in its entirety, because, you know, Mr. Vogel's statement about him setting forth the foundation is, is, is very much accurate, and we recognize that, you know, we as, as planners now are standing on the shoulders of giants, and one of those being Mr. Lusk. So, food for thought for the board, if we wanted to do a dedication to an individual, you know, that's something that we would be very supportive of. On your agenda, we have two items. There are two SPR numbers, and both of those may no longer need to be moving forward. So, the suggestion from the Planning Department would be that we could abandon Number Three, because that was going to be the vehicle by which we did the Shared Vision Appendix or Document, or something along those lines. But I think we've solved that issue with the Shared Vision Chapter and the co-adoption strategy that Ms. Renz Whitmore put forward today. So, I think it, there's an opportunity here to withdraw or remove otherwise Number Three, and to accomplish both the adoption of the city-county plan and the Shared Vision Chapter in Number Four. So, just to make the process more efficient when the board does feel ready to move towards a vote, I think we could do a little bit of housekeeping to make that a little bit more clear for everybody. And to just also say that, you know, we would, we would support a continuance of today's proceeding to allow us to continue to work with our legal staff and anyone that they deem necessary to make sure that we do get those additional techniques that we're proposing to a place that's not only defensible from the technical perspective, like Mr. McGregor and his colleagues, but also something that our legal department feels comfortable with as we, as we look towards, you know, the county making decisions and, and ultimately maybe having to defend those in a court of law, that we're on firm footing there. So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hamm? I would like to, I would agree, and I would like to move for a continuance. I think that I must say how proud I am of, of where we are right now, and again, I'll reiterate what has been said today, that the. I'll reiterate what has been said today, that the planning staff truly has been listening to our public, to the residents in Burnleyo County, uh to our partners at the city, and I think that these iterations that we've done have really made a difference, and it's a better document because of it, not the least of which is the the this this one little piece that's not so little, and that is the water section and the fact that you have such great language, as I said before, in the visioning and in in the policy level, I'm sorry, i- in the in the vision level of the plan about the importance of water availability, and it's not the same as it was in twenty thirteen nor nineteen seventy-four when this original comp plan was written. So we need to be the here and the now in these policy sections. So I think that we are almost there and with a continuance in fine-tuning those water policies and techniques that are legally and, you know, and and very well-written rather than hoping that 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 they're there, 'cause I think we're almost there, but um so I I'd move for a continuance.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any other?
Madam Chair, just for clarity, is that for, do you wanna continue both items, or do you wanna ju- just to see if we wanna move forward with twenty twenty-three-three and twenty twenty-three-four, or if you just wanna move forward with the second of those?
I think if you bring it forward to us um uh i- i- in the next meeting, and you said that you could probably do that with in in our next meeting with that recommendation, um we haven't made a motion for the two items here today. So I I would say continue them both, and you come back with with your recommendation.
Understood.
And and also, uh, we have a sort of a understanding that we're gonna bring in some of these water advocates as well as our legal eye on this, so that we know that what we're what we're looking at is something that that uh makes sense for. We we have got to look at our water when we're making these land use decisions in countywide, and there's no question about that, so. Any other comments?
Just a just a date, we would be ready uh by the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I will call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you again for all your great work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
See you on the twenty-seventh. Okay, with that, um, the announcement of our next zoning meeting will be, oh, okay, here we have June eleventh, so we're talking the twenty-eighth of May. I don't know, this is an old version, sorry. May twenty-eighth? Thank you. And it will be here at three P M. in the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.